I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as we wait for the chief to come.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, infinite.
And now for a moment of silence. Thank you. Maybe see. Madam Secretary, may I have your call, please?
Yes. William Caldwell?
Here.
Gary Simpson?
Here.
Marlon Milner?
Olivia Brady?
Here.
Derek Perry?
Sonia Sanders?
Here.
Lynda Christian?
I would like to make a motion to entertain the minutes of the council workshop that was held on June 16, 2015. That motion carries.
You need a vote.
I'm sorry.
So motion second. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'd like to make an announcement that we had an executive session that discussed And next we have announcements. So beginning every Friday, Buck Jones, in association with Main Street Water Ice, presents Family Fun Day on Fridays at the Skagcock Field from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. All kids are welcome from the ages of 6 to 13. The evening includes movies, food, games, and entertainment. For any additional information, please call 267-774-1694. On Saturday, July 11th, CADCOM will be celebrating its 49 years in Norristown. Enjoy basketball tournaments, vendors, health screenings, food, music, and children's activities. And for additional information, please contact area code 610-277-6363, and that's at extension Sunday concerts at the Band Show begin at 7:00 p.m. On July 12th, the entertainment will be the skiddy show, and that's a little bit of everything. July 19th will be the Southern Edge, which is country and southern rock. And then there will be a special concert held Saturday, July 18th, at 4:00 p.m., which is gospel music. Does anyone else have any announcements?
No.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the announcements. Madam Secretary, do we have public comments?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dalbert Harrison. I'm here to comment on Simmons Park and how the administration has made it worse. All the money has been spent, it has been worse, but due to the fact that everybody's not in here, I don't see the administrator. The police is here, but yes, I love that for the chief is here because what I'm going to say is it's going to be in reference to the chief and the administrator and how the Department of Planning have made it worse. It's a park where there's nothing but student athletes, chief. There has not been no problem. There's not been one debt. There's not been one stabbing. There's not been nothing down there. Yet still, the administration and member of these administration feel the need to hate on the park. They've turned the lights off on him. Like I've said, I'm going to keep the comment for the next meeting because everybody's not here and would not be fair for me to be talking about without the administrator because I want him to hear what I have to say. You understand what I'm saying? Everybody know Jay Misani and the Planning Department have totally just wrecked the park. Basically, it's a park that was given to us by the state because they think we deserve it because of our student athletes. It was awarded to us. The administration had basically robbed us of everything of it. It was supposed to be all breakaway backboard, a scoreboard, and everything else, light for the kids. That has been taken away. The field itself, there was, I was here when the contract was awarded. The bid came down between local 135 and whoever was awarded. Garrett was sitting right back there with me. The field is worse than it ever been. We have a flag football team. Councilwoman Sanders is on one of those flag football teams. We have men, female softball team. None of them can play on the field. They have made it feel worse. Like I said, I want to keep it to a minimum because everybody's not here and I'd like everybody to be involved with this. Thank you.
Dalbert, if you could, could you please stand?
Thank you.
I know you and I, we had several discussions, and one being in regards to extending the lights down at the park.
Yeah, that's another thing. We had an All-Star game over there two years ago. Khalif Wyatt, one of the kids, he's great. I mean, those kids are student that go to school, they don't smoke nothing. We had an All-Star game, they turned the light off on 10 o'clock. Councilman Simpson stood right there, chief sat right there and said, "I'd ask them to turn the light on at 11 o'clock." He told them, "My kids go to bed at 9:00," meaning we got to live by his house rule. And they keep turning the light off at 10:00 right now.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Who said they go to bed at 9:00? I said that?
Who said that? Councilman Marlon Milner stood right there and said, "Nobody wants to go to bed at 9:00."
First of all, let's be clear here.
My memory is like...
First of all, let's be clear here. My kids went to bed at 9:00 when they were in elementary school. I have a 23-year-old, I have an 18-year-old. Dalbert, look. Dalbert, Mr. Dalbert, look.
I don't have the reason to lie on you.
Dalbert, look. Honestly, you know what? Every time that we have these conversations, you always come at me with something.
Councilman Simpson.
Dalbert, I'm not going to sit here and take it.
That's why I wanted...
Dalbert, I will not sit here and take it.
That's why I wanted Marlon and... But Mr. Solicitor is a lawyer. He will remember that if their memory is as good as mine.
Dalbert, you're the only one that remembers anything that you want to remember when you want to remember and how you want to remember.
The chief stood right, sat right there. He said, "When I confronted you guys on it," he said, "I told them to leave the light off."
Dalbert, those lights go out because the school district, because the school district and the...
Can I finish talking?
No, you can't. Because first of all, you're going to sit here and...
This is my table.
First of all, you're going to sit here and tell lies, blatant lies.
Yes, you did. You said...
Yeah, I know, Dalbert.
You said your kid wasn't in bed, and Councilman Marlon Milner reacted and said, "Nobody wants to go to bed at 9:00."
Dalbert, I never said that, Dalbert.
Yes, you did. I have no...
Hey, Dalbert.
Sir, do you have anything new to...
Dalbert.
You said you wanted to come back and address this with Mr. Jones.
No, he has nothing to add. Yes, I would like to. Yes, I would like to.
Okay, thank you for your time, Dalbert.
Right now, the light is being turned off at 10:00, chief. Curfew, it's summertime. You understand, Ms. Olivia? It's summertime. Curfew is at 12:00. Why are you turning the light off on these kids coming from college who depend on the summer league to perfect their skills to go back to school?
We will make sure Mr. Jones contacts you and relates...
I will. Yes, Mr. Solicitor, thank you. And I will be back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
So will I.
Thank you, Dalbert.
Excuse me, Madam President or Madam Vice President. Chief, when is our actual, our timeline for curfew during school period as well as in the summer months?
I don't have the time.
10:30, you were in school hours. 10:30, you were in school. We can spread it right downstairs. 10:30, you were in school. We can do the school hours at 12:00.
I do know when we addressed this issue, when the administrator and I talked about the issue, the lights are supposed to be on now past curfew. We'd already made that concession, so I'm not...
That's the plan, chief.
Okay, well...
You can come over there right about 10:00, the kids, and then they stay out there and play all night in the dark because the curfew, they're not on curfew. These are good kids, student athletes.
Okay, so what did you and the administrator decide at that time?
We, based on the request, we looked to see what kind of activity we had after, related to the games and around that time, and we decided to extend it from, I believe it was 10:00 to 11:30, is my recollection.
Okay. Thank you. So what you're saying is that was addressed?
It was addressed.
Okay, so it's a point of actually enacting it?
If it's not on till 11:30, then there's, it sounds like it's a breakdown in communication.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's it.
Madam Secretary, do we have any communication?
No, we don't.
Thank you. So we have item A for planning. Jane, do you want to discuss the funds order for the Elon Group?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. If you recall, council had entertained the use of the grant that was given to the Preservation Society. Basically, it was given to the municipality through the Preservation Society in an amount of $20,000. And Council President Lynda had asked that we go back and speak to the Preservation Society to have a consensus on how they were to use these funds. The Preservation Society had suggested that they would use the funds by offering homeowners small grants, especially homeowners that were going through the HARB process. In the discussion last month, administration pointed out to council that that would be not only cumbersome, but it would be costly. Therefore, we believe that we needed to come to some sort of consensus with the Preservation Society on how these funds were to be used. If you recall, the administration had proposed that we use the funds through the CDBG facade program, where it's a already established program. We would not need to create any more new rules, and we'll be able to deliver the project more efficiently. While we were in discussions with the Preservation Society, we recommended to the Preservation Society that it might be useful if it's just used, if these $20,000 were used on one project, and we suggested the Selma project. The Preservation Society informed us that they had received another $25,000 from another source, so we asked them if they could actually use the $25,000 as a match for the $20,000 of the Elon money so that they could complete the preservation work that they're doing in the Selma. They agreed to it, and then we told them that we would come back and report to council. And if council approved, then that's how we would handle the $20,000.
Questions, anyone? So I would like to entertain a motion to approve the use of the funds awarded from the Elon Group to expand the Historic Picade Improvement Program. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? So the motion, the motion carries. Next, under the administration topics, Shonora? Could you please discuss the Association of the Firefighters Local 2335, please?
Yes, I would, Madam Vice President. The municipality has negotiated a contract bargaining agreement with the Norristown firefighters for a contract term from January 1st, 2015, retroactive, to December 31st, 2018. The agreement would supersede the current, the agreement that expired on December 31st, 2014, for the firefighters. The salient points of the contract, the highlights are compensation agreed upon in this contract reflects an increase over the next four years as follows. 2015, 2.25%. 2016, 2.5%. 2017, 2.75%. And 2018, the percentage would match the North Town Police Department bargaining agreement when that agreement is negotiated at that time. There was also an increased contribution on the behalf of the firefighters, starting in 2016, at a rate of 6%. And we also negotiated a Cadillac tax re-opener should it be required for 2018, in conjunction with the Affordable Care Act. The firefighter pension contributions have also increased in 2015. It increased 6% 2016, 7% 2017, and 2018. The contribution rate would be 7.5%. There were also pension enhancements that were negotiated with this contract, which would add a component to the pension enhancement called the Deferred Retirement Option Plan, which is a drop, it's entitled drop provision for the contract. There was an added guarantee survivor benefit for future single firefighters, and there was a funeral expense agreed upon for firefighters killed in action to cover reasonable and documented expenses. The municipality has also negotiated an option to cover those costs with an insurance policy for which the premium amount is nominal. And there was a title change in the contract as well for changing the title of battalion chiefs, battalion chiefs, to career assistant fire chiefs throughout the contract. And it is being requested that council consider ratifying the contract that has been ratified by the members of the Firefighters Union Local 2335 for the period from January 1st, 2015, to December 31st, 2018.
Thank you, Shonora. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the ratification of the agreement between the municipality and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2335.
Sumoog.
Those in favor?
Question.
Sorry. Councilman Simpson?
Ms. Burke, could you, so Cadillac tax, could you kind of give me what that, actually, what does that look like?
The Cadillac tax as a result of the Affordable Care Act is a 40% tax on the value of participant elected healthcare benefits that exceed a certain dollar threshold in 2018. The thresholds that were put in place when the Affordable Care Act was put in place was 10,200, and the value will fluctuate based on how the evaluation is captured between 2010 and 2018 when the practice is enacted. So depending on whether or not there are elements of the contract that would trigger that Cadillac tax, we have the opportunity to meet and negotiate with the firefighters to revisit that to determine how to best evaluate how we would manage that.
Okay. What does that look like financially to us if we are hit with it?
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
What does that look like financially if we are assessed?
I would need to get back to you with a value for what would the estimate be based on the Cadillac tax charge based on the benefits?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a motion on the floor. I can just say, all those in favor?
All those in favor? Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Shonora, for item B, would you care to discuss the reserve funds?
Yes, I would, Madam Vice President. The request is presented to council as a result of several items that have been determined that need, that have a critical nature or a health, safety issue. These issues were not presented for the Public Works and Safety Department at the time of budget preparation. And what the municipality is asking for is a release of authorization of funds from the credit reserve to fund some of these projects that need to be handled in an expedient manner because they were not budgeted in the 2015 budget. And I would go through the different projects to identify what they are and what is requested of council. The history of this particular issue is regarding some items, as I stated, that were not addressed during the 2015 budget process. The first item is procurement of trees related to the Markley Street project. An agreement was reached with PennDOT approximately 10 years ago with Mayor in PennDOT around agreeing that the municipality would provide trees upon the closure of that construction project. The value of those trees is about $11,000, and what they are, what's being proposed is funding the $11,000 out of the credit reserve. The trees that will be placed along the Markley Street corridor will also require some specialized irrigation and support for where they're being planted. There are several tree types that have been proposed, and as part of this agreement, the municipality is also in discussions with PennDOT because when the agreement was drawn up, it was drawn up based on the identification of the municipality as a borough. And when it was determined that we were identifying as a home rule municipality, there were some benefits that are being investigated as a result of that classification. So that total expenditure amount would be approximately $11,000. The second project that's being requested for funding is the purchase of two leaf boxes. Currently, the leaf boxes that are owned by the municipality are out of service, out of date, and beyond repair and obsolete. These boxes allow us to do the leaf pickup during the fall season. Without those boxes, we would not be able to provide that particular service. The leaf boxes cost approximately $35,000 per box for a total of $68,912. The lead time on construction of those leaf boxes is 60 to 75 days. So in order to have the leaf boxes ordered and available for the fall season, the request is being made to be considered for funding of that particular procurement process. The next matter for discussion is the master plan for road maintenance. The municipalities not currently have a road maintenance plan for 2015, and with the completion of the municipalities' audits up through 2013 and working towards completing 2014, the opportunity to look at different financing opportunities presents itself. But in the interim, as part of the initiation of this planning process, which would conduct as part, which the municipality would conduct as part of its five-year capital plan, would be a review by a vendor to provide the master plan for the five years for the road maintenance, evaluating and classifying the needs of the roads and what is immediate, what is stable, and what can be planned for over the several periods of, over the period of several years. The cost for that particular procurement would be $21,000. Along with planning for the road projects, what is being proposed and investigated is the opportunity to support a bond funding for the road project over several years, which would allow us to extend our road projects with planning and also to extend it to make the impact more efficient and effective for the municipality. And in supporting that would be the liquid fuels allocation that comes from the state every year annually. That is not being asked for at this moment. Those particular items are still in the planning process. However, the master plan to initiate this process is what is asked to be considered, and that value of that project is $21,000. The last project that is being requested to be considered is the roof repair for the municipal garage. Currently, the municipal garage is in a state of disrepair. It has suffered many leaks and to the point where the lights have water in them in some cases. And what we're requesting is the opportunity to make the necessary roof repairs that have been evaluated and proposed by our engineer. And the estimated average value for the roof, based on the estimates that we received to date, is about $188,000. The situation with the roof is something that is critical and needs repair rather expediently. So the total of this request that is being requested is $289,000, $289,412, from the municipal credit reserve fund to fund these four projects, based on the estimates that have been provided to council. And so what is being requested is a release and authorization to utilize these funds to support the procurement of these particular projects that I've described.
I would like to make a motion to approve the release of an authorization to spend capital reserve funds for critical and life safety-related performance for the Public Works Department.
Sumoog.
Madam Vice President?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. I just have a question regarding the leaf boxes proposal. What is the impact, basically, well, what is the impact if the municipality does not approve these movements of funds for these projects? Specifically, the leaf boxes. I know that we have the collections going on. Could you get a little bit more into that?
Well, the impact for the disapproval or nonapproval for the funding for supporting the leaf boxes would mean that we would not be able to pursue procurement under the current budget year, and that exercise would not be conducted in the fall as efficiently. I believe that we have one box available, but that's not sufficient to complete the project as it is planned out for the municipality on an annual basis.
Thank you. And I just have another question regarding the road maintenance. Could you clarify a little bit how this road maintenance plan going? It's my understanding that we have had a priority list of roads that need to be repaired. Is that part of the road maintenance program that you're talking about where we've gone through and prioritized various different road conditions and identified which ones need to be repaired in a particular order so that when funds come in, that these roads do get repaired in a timely manner?
And I think that what we are requesting is an enhanced process. The roads have been evaluated, but not completely or efficiently, to allow for an extended period planning process. Roads have been evaluated and addressed based on the highest level of need. What we are looking to do is create a process where we are proactively addressing the streets and maintenance programs to plan for the most critical needs by what, but also while maintaining a record of how we would move forward to progress to address the streets plan over a number of years. The master plan would be that project to better enhance that evaluation that has previously been done. The evaluation, from my understanding in the past, has not been as broad, and the breadth and depth has not been sufficient enough to make a plan beyond a year at a time. And what we're looking to do is extend that so that we don't have to revisit this issue every year, but you have an ongoing awareness of what is upcoming in the future periods. And it also allows us to plan and budget efficiently and effectively for the projects as we move forward through those years.
And does this also include all paved surfaces in Norristown, including alleys?
I would be able to look into that for you and confirm specifically whether or not it includes all paved surfaces, including alleys.
Thank you.
Councilman Caldwell?
Did I understand correctly when you were talking about the piece on the Markley Street project that we were, because we were a home rule municipality, we would need to fund something that was going to be funded? Can you review that again for me?
What was requested in the agreement that was in place was that the 10-year agreement was part of the agreement 10 years ago to, for the municipality to fund the tree placement project at the end of the project. The PennDOT agreement that's being revisited based on the municipal maintenance requirements for the state project are what's being evaluated to determine if there is a benefit or what the benefit is of being a municipality versus a borough.
In terms of benefit, in terms of...
In terms of having the original agreement that was in place and the...
I might be able to help. When this agreement was signed is when we were a borough, so to speak.
We were always a home rule municipality.
I know. But it appears as if, if we are terming ourselves as a municipality, we may not have as much responsibility in doing the maintenance, so that's what they're exploring.
Okay, thank you. What would be the impact if we were a third-class city?
It's not clear. It's not clear. But that's a, it's a good question. It's not clear, but the bottom line is that we're not what we're sent to have been.
Well, we're a third-class city without calling ourselves one, but...
Correct.
No, I'm just, I was just curious if that was...
I think what's critical is that...
One of the cases where we have, we were at a competitive... One of the cases where we have we have we're at a competitive disadvantage because we continue to either style ourselves as a municipality or style ourselves as a borough when what we ought to be is a third-class city where we could take advantage of all of the programs, all of the 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 opportunities that a third-class city has.
And I think I think the main fact that they're actually looking into it to see what what my benefit is is critical.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilman Simpson.
Yeah, so a couple things. When do we have to decide on on these these projects? Is there a timeline? Or is there a certain deadline that needs to be met by a certain point before we agree to this? Or is it something that we can hold off on for a couple weeks?
Well, the tree pricing that has been provided to us has a propensity to expire, and the estimate that's been provided may not be honored should we go forward. The purchase of the leafs boxes because of the lead time to get them constructed and delivered would need to be decisioned in order to to start the procurement process, to place the order to have the construction done, and the funding would need to be in place. The road project is something that we're looking at now that the audits are done, and we're looking at other avenues of funding to support the road project. But we need the platform, which is this master plan, in order to initiate how we will move forward with that plan and what the components of our five-year plan would be. And as far as the roof leaking, that is a rather immediate concern that we recently determined, and there was a walkthrough, and the safety issue of that is something that's relatively eminent.
Okay. So the master plan is really just something that we can look at, that we still have to decide whether or not we want to go forward with how or what is what comes back from the master plan?
That will inform us how we will move forward with what the priorities would be of our five-year plan.
Okay.
There is a motion on the floor. Those in favor?
There was a second.
There was.
I second it. I did second.
Yes.
Yes.
She motioned it. I seconded it. And then then Olivia asked for a question.
Right.
And then we all questioned.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next topic of discussion is finance. And Shonora, if you could, please brief us on the general laws of authorizing rental license application process.
Certainly. The proposal, the request is for the consideration of advertisement of a revision to the general laws of the municipality of Narsetown for section 245-2-G related to rental licenses. This is for an authorization to advertise ordinance 15 dash I'm sorry, 15 dash 6 to amend the general laws to better reflect the process of the rental license application. Currently, the general law states that beginning in 2008, application for housing licenses for 2009 and thereafter shall be made on or prior to November 15th of the preceding year. At that time, at the time of the application, the license fee shall be paid. Application for housing licenses made after November 15th shall be subject to a penalty, which will be set by the resolution of the municipal council, which was amended in on October 7, 2008 by ordinance 0822. The ordinance change is requested to clarify the process and to manage the expectations of the property owners and to also allow for a review and inspection process, which is not in place now because currently the process is that an application is not issued. It is a invoice that is processed and paid, and then a license is granted, which thereby automatically grants them a permit, and it doesn't provide the opportunity for review of any changes to the property owners, to any of the primary points of contact, to the property condition, should that be considered, and an evaluation by the code department to determine whether or not a license should be granted to the property owner at the time of application. And what we are proposing is to introduce those particular components to this process to allow for review and a more effective way to review and approve and issue permits for rental licenses for the municipality of Narsetown.
I would like to entertain a motion for the advertisement of a proposed ordinance 15 dash 06 amending section 245 dash 2 dash G of the general laws authorizing a rental license application process. Those in favor? Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Shonora, you're up again in regards to discuss the equipment and uniforms for the police, fire, and public safety personnel.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
You're welcome.
This is a consideration for the municipal council to consider awarding uniform contracts for uniforms and equipment for police, fire, and other public safety personnel to uniform gear and to 9/11 safety equipment. This is a proposal. There was a proposal that was released to better manage the process that is offered as a benefit to members of those particular departments through bargaining agreements in most cases for a financial benefit to pay for uniforms and equipment for those particular departments. And what the process was initiated for was to play put in place better controls and to manage the expectations and to reconcile the expenditures that the municipality makes on behalf of the staff for uniforms and equipment. The police, fire, and code department, including the PCOS and crossing guards, were requested to evaluate and select a vendor of their choosing based on the responses by the vendor. We had two vendors who replied to our request for submission of proposal. The police department, parking enforcement, PCOS, and crossing guards selected uniform gear, and fire and code enforcement selected 9/11 gear. As it was stated in the request for proposal, the municipality indicated that there was an opportunity to separately award components of the contract based on the evaluation and department needs. The processes that we would put in place as a result of having a contract in place would allow us to manage the order process, the funding process of the procurement, and the reconciliation process annually at the end of the year. That is currently not in place. What the practice was previously was to fund the uniform expenditure at the beginning of the year as a prepayment deposit and reconcile based on the completion of any orders at the end of the year and receive a refund if there was anything due as a result of nonorder of that amount up to what the value was based on the contract agreed amount. What we are looking to put in place is an agreement where we would be invoiced, and the staff as well as the municipality would have the opportunity to reconcile the expenditures and to pay on a ongoing basis of the amount that is obligated by the municipality based on the orders. And at the end of the year, we would reconcile, but there would be no expectation of refund, and we would only expend what would be ordered by the personnel staff up to the amount that is allowed based on the bargained agreements. Oh, and one other component is that previously the police department was the only department that had a uniform contract in place.
Thank you, Shonora. I would like to enter to excuse me. I would like to entertain a motion to award the contracts for the supply of uniforms, equipment for police, fire, and public safety personnel to uniform gear of Philadelphia, PA, and 922 safety equipment of Narsetown, PA.
And I'm sorry, Madam, excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Vice President. It's actually 9/11.
9/11.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Shonora. Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Next topic of discussion is public safety. Item A, Chief, if you could, discuss the handicap parking spaces.
This resolution is to establish handicap parking at the following addresses: 808 Hamilton Street, 1022 Cherry Street, 630 Stanbridge Street, and 1242 Markley Street. We did our normal checks. We determined that the residents have medical conditions that impact their mobility, and therefore, the accommodation is reasonable.
Thank you, Chief. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution 15 dash 128 for handicaps signage at 808 Hamilton Street, 1022 Cherry Street, 630 Stanbridge Street, and 1242 Markley Street.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
It requires a roll call.
Madam Secretary may have a roll call, please.
William Caldwell.
Aye.
Gary Simpson.
Aye.
Livia Brady.
Aye.
Sonya Sanders.
Aye. The next item we have, Chief, this again, this is you. If you could, just discuss a little bit about the department's application for the justice assistance grant.
Sure. The 2015 justice assistance grant was for $30,350. Some of the things that can be used for law enforcement programs, prosecution and court programs, prevention and education programs, et cetera. As part of our strategy, we shifted from a largely incident-driven policing strategy to one where we're considering problems as the basic core of what we do. It's called problem-oriented policing. Part of that strategy requires us to have a system in place that allows us to analyze data and put together the locations that need the most attention. You know, one of the reasons why that's essential is because when we send the police officers out, we want them to have a plan ahead of time as opposed to make it up as they go along and make sure that they're in the right areas that are going to, you know, give us the most impact for the work that they're doing. We researched it and came up with an intelligence system or a case management and link analysis system that's going to allow us to do a better job with the data that we have available. Some of the things that it's going to do, some of the highlights are, it's going to allow us to track and manage all aspects of investigations, manage and develop intelligence information, enable advanced data mining, allow the performance of advanced queries, generate reports that indicate inferential associations, and uncover and highlight criminal behavior patterns. This system is an add-on to our current records management system, so it's going to allow us to it's going to enhance what we can do, and it's going to minimize the learning curve that it's going to bring. So our application is for the full $30,350. I think it's a it's the right thing to do to add to our strategy at this point.
Is this a match? Is there a match on the list?
No, there is not.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the Narsetown Police Department's application for the 2015 justice assistance grant.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item of discussion is for the code department. Jane, if you could, discuss the HARB rules and regulations for the certificates.
Certainly. The HARB has taken a look at the applications for the following addresses: 631 West Main Street, 205 Chain Street, 32 East Chestnut Street, 915 West Washington Street, 917 West Washington Street, 526 East Moore Street, 528 East Moore Street, 739 George Street, 317 Marshall Street. And they found the improvements they're doing are appropriate with regard to historic preservation standards.
Thank you, Jane. I would like to entertain a motion to approve HARB certificates of appropriateness for the following addresses: 631 West Main Street, 205 Chain Street, 32 East Chestnut Street, 915 West Washington Street, 917 West Washington Street, 526 East Moore Street, 528 East Moore Street, 739 George Street, and 317 Marshall Street.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Our next item for discussion is the construction progress at 9 West Main Street. So I would like to make a motion to open the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Yes, Madam Vice President, I have a series of motions for council this evening. I'll do just a brief explanation of each of them before council goes ahead and takes action on those motions. Of course, because we're opening the agenda after there's a motion and a second on each of the motions, it requires an opportunity for public comment. First, there will be, I would suggest the council would make a motion to approve the settlement between the municipality of Narsetown and Malvern Bank and the amount of $50,000 being paid to the municipality. This goes back to the Stewart Ward litigation of 12 years ago. And at the time, municipality sued what was the predecessor of Malvern Bank for not doing due diligence in cash and checks. At this time, Malvern would like to settle and pay the municipality $50,000. The next three items would be a motion to approve the settlement of the assessment appeal between Five Saints Distilling and the municipality resulting in a decreased assessment of $85,000. Obviously, Five Saints is going through the process of building and improving their property. Once that is completed, there will be an opportunity for the school district, who's already approved this, and the municipality to reassess and hopefully bring that decreased assessment up. And finally, these other two actions have already been acted on by the school district for assessment appeals for 9 West Main Street resulting in a decreased assessment of $142,000 for 2015 and $156,700 for 2014. That that is not the decreased assessment in in total. That's just the amount that was agreed to between the assessor for the school district and for the applicant. And the same owner who also owns one west main street resulted in a decreased assessment of $1,238,100 for 2014 and $1,122,900 for 2015. So I believe that provides a brief explanation, Madam President, of the proposed motions. Of course, they after there's a motion and a second, it does require an opportunity for public comment.
Okay, so do we have any public comments?
Go ahead and make the motions, ma'am. Separate.
Separate. Okay. I would like to entertain the motion to approve the settlement between the municipality of Narsetown and Malvern Bank and the amount of $50,000 being paid to the municipality. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the settlement of the assessment appeal between Five Saints Distilling and the municipality resulting in a decreased assessment of $85,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. I would also like to entertain a motion to approve the settlement. I would also like to entertain a motion to approve the settlement of the assessment appeal between West Main Street, L.C., which is 9 West Main Street, resulting in a decreased assessment of $142,000, is that, $142 million for 20?
$142,000.
$142,000 for 2015 and $156,700 for 2014. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries. Also, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the assessment appeal, appeal between West Main Street, which is 1 West Main Street, resulting in a decreased assessment of $1,238, what's that, $1,000?
$1,100.
$1,000 for 2014 and $122,900 for 2015.
And that's $1,122,000. I heard, yes.
$900,015 for 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that motion carries.
I have a motion to close the agenda.
I would also like to make a motion to close the agenda. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. You're welcome.
Good job, Senator. I've heard there was a lot of [inaudible].